Director Mizrahi, can you come join us up here real fast? So, this is President Top. The Board recessed out of Executive Session at 4:40 PM. The Special Meeting of the Board is now reconvened at 4:45 PM. There being no further business to come before the Board, the Special Meeting of the Board is now adjourned at 4:45 PM. And the Board will reconvene for a Special Meeting here in two minutes. One minute. Perfect. We have, looks like we have Director Briggs and Director Clark online. Good evening. This is President Top, and I'm now calling the Board's Special Meeting to order at 4:45 PM. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Like to, we would like to acknowledge that we are on ancestral lands and the traditional territories of the Puget Sound Coast Salish people. For the record, I will call the role Vice President Briggs. She is online. I see her, so let's give her one moment here.
Hi, sorry, I couldn't unmute. Here.
Thank you, Vice President Briggs. Director Clark, also, I believe, online.
Yes, I'm present.
Director Hershey will be unable to be with us this evening. Director Mizrahi.
Here.
Director Rankin.
Here.
Director Sargu.
Present.
And this is President Top. Good evening, everyone. On our Special Board Meeting this evening, we have sort of three main buckets of things. Sort of the, some last-minute things for the upcoming school year, an update on our Superintendent Search, and a Strategic Plan Update. We're going to begin the evening with an update from HYA on our Superintendent Search. They are our search firm on our Superintendent Search. As Directors, remember, we extended the Community Engagement Timeline, which will impact the timeline for the Leadership Profile and the Search. Mr. Ali should be online with us and will walk us through the new proposed timeline and the status of our engagement and next steps. After our discussion with HYA, we will move to Public Testimony, and then an opportunity to move into a number of action items, and we'll conclude with a Strategic Plan Update. I have just a few housekeeping items on things that are coming up before we get started. The online survey for the Superintendent Search will remain open till August 4th. Thank you to everyone who filled out the survey or attended one of the sessions. Your participation in this process is invaluable. I appreciate so much the interest in our community in participating in this process, and how much folks really care about public education here in our city. So, Board Directors, again, August 4th is when the survey closes, so please continue to push out the survey to your network, to your communities. And then, the next announcement is Director Rankin and I will be holding our Monthly Board Engagement Session tomorrow, 7:31, at James Baldwin Elementary at 6:00 PM. I'm told that there will be snacks, so come and have some snacks and talk with Director Rankin and myself. Sort of on the list of topics, we have our Superintendent Search, Strategic Plan slash Goals and Guardrails, and I'm sure folks will also bring other topics they want to discuss with us. The, I want to announce that the Ad-Hoc Budget Committee has been chartered and will be chaired by Director Clark. The first meeting will be on August 7th. This committee, as we sort of talked about in our retreat, has four goals: to really collaborate with staff on developing a budget timeline and process that works for Directors; get sufficient information to provide strategic oversight for us on the budget in ample time, and to inform budget decisions. So essentially, who needs to know what by when? It will develop recommendations for the Board on improving budget process and decision-making transparency, hopefully to allow for more public engagement on the budget. It will develop recommendations for the Board on a need and scope of analysis on district finances, and then it will develop and recommend Board-level priorities to guide future budget development process, including Board Training and Development. So, those are my housekeeping announcements, and I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Ali now from HYA to kind of walk us through an update on our Superintendent Search process. Mr. Ali, are you online?
Yes, I'm online and accounted for. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Oh, beautiful. Thank you, Madam President, and to the distinguished members of the Governing Board. Good afternoon. In addition, good afternoon to the Seattle community, as well as the exceptional staff that you have there in your district who've been very instrumental in this process. So, without any further ado, I'll just jump right into the presentation if we can tee it up.
So, we don't see a presentation. Is this, is this something our staff has, Mr. Ali, or is this something?
Yes, I'll send it over to Julie Worth and Company. So, they're in possession of it. They should be able to upload it.
All right, just one, we are gonna, this will take about a minute to upload, and we will get something up. Sorry for the delay.
All right.
Okay, it looks like we are up with the Presentation, Board Directors.
There we go. All right, next slide.
And I think folks can see it online as well.
Okay. So what's before you, Madam President and members of the Board? It's the signature process. You've been privy to this document before, as well as your community's also seen this document. And so where we are today, we're in the engage and the recruitment phase. What does that mean? We're still doing ongoing engagement, and we're actively recruiting for a wide range of talented candidates who will in fact exceed the expectations of the community. And so that's where we are today. We'll discuss the timeline in subsequent slides, of course, the selection phase, and then begin the transition. But again, we're in the engagement as well as the recruitment phase of the process. Next slide. Engagement Sessions. I know this is a little small, but what you see before you, we kicked off the Engagement Sessions, May 29th, 2025, with our students. And we will end, it'll probably be the week of April 11th. It'll be the 11th or the 12th. We're going to extend the Engagement Sessions to include the Native community as well as the Black community. We were on the ground this weekend past with a tremendous amount of enthusiasm from the Vietnamese as well as the Latino community. We did have some engagement efforts with some of your Black community members, but again, we want to capture additional voice of the Indigenous community as well as the Black community. So those focus groups, which will be virtual, will conclude the week of the 11th. I put the 12th in there because that's the day that we're shooting for. But we're going to work very collaboratively with the community-based organizations, which was the case over this weekend past. Again, big ups, big shout-out to your staff, as well as your community-based organizations who co-facilitated the on-the-ground Engagement Sessions. So shout-out to all of those individuals who were intimately involved in that. That's represented on this document before you. Next slide.
President Ali, I need, I need you for the record to change from April to August. You said April, so for the record, can you restate the dates?
Okay, let's back up one more time, I'm sorry. Back up on that slide, Ms. Worth? Okay, so we started in May and we're ending in August. I do apologize if I said April. So August 12th are the dates that we're looking to conclude with the Native community as well as the Black community.
It is recorded if you want to go back and listen to yourself.
No, I understand this.
I'm joking, I'm joking. I'm joking.
I'm not going to debate you, okay? All right. Leadership Profile. So let's talk about the Leadership Profile Report. This has been a document that we've discussed throughout the Engagement, the Engagement Phase. We've talked about various elements, but let's kind of unpack what that represents. And so the overall objective is to define the purpose. We talk about what goes into a Leadership Profile Report. Well, it develops not just what the community desires to see in a Superintendent Aspirant, but it serves as, that fulcrum, it serves as the living and breathing document for which a Superintendent would not just use as a part of their interview process, but it helps to set the groundwork for a strategic plan and/or strategic implementation for various initiatives a Superintendent desires. So of course, we look at desire characteristics. The focus groups are very essential to the development of the profile, the participation, the summarization, and then of course, their survey results. Now, there's been several questions asked by folks within the community if I would be able to provide examples of desire characteristics. Now, looking at another systems and other searches, it changes. So I'll just give you some mere examples. Not that that's the case here, but these are examples that align with what communities around the country have sought with respect to a transformational leader. Definitely wanted somebody who's bold and audacious and innovative. Communities are interested in folks who experience, who have a tremendous amount of experience working with diverse cultures, diverse populations, the uniqueness of communities. I'm very, very sure we all would agree we want somebody who's student-centered, student-focused, able to prioritize equitable resource allocation, support underserved communities, historically marginalized communities, multilingual, special education, children who are struggling economically speaking. And some communities, folks are desired of people who are connectors and communicators and able to utilize a measure of authenticity to forge relationships with families and staff and general community partners. Individuals who are interested in utilizing decision-making strategies that are not just totalitarian in nature or dictatorial, but inclusive and demonstrates a measure of transparency. So those are attributes, and those are characteristics that communities often desire within leaders. And I'm very confident, once we analyze the data, there'll be very similar characteristics sought in a leader within the Seattle Public School System. This document will include not just the online survey data that we have been collecting, but in addition, any other comments as annotated during the on-the-ground Engagement Sessions. A lot of that will find its way into the document, and the Board will be very pleasantly surprised. Of course, the Board will have an opportunity to be presented the document. The community will also have their hands on the document. In addition, the document will be made available to Superintendent Aspirants. Next slide. So this is the Engagement Timeline. This is the draft document because, of course, it's living as well as breathing. And so where are we, where are we today? Today, we're providing the Board update. August 4th is the closure date of the online survey. August 4th, again, is the closure date of the online survey, and that will be Monday. Monday gives individuals an opportunity over the weekend to be able to capture any last tidbits of information. We did it, allowed for an additional extension because we wanted to be very respectful of several community events involving the Black community as well as your Native/Indigenous community. And they asked, hey, we need a little bit more time. And so why not grant the community an additional week or so in order to collect that engagement? It's fair, it's equitable, and it's also inclusive. August 26th, we'll preview the Leadership Profile Report, and we'll discuss community engagement themes with the Board in person. September 1st through the 15th, of course, to be determined, we'll then share the Leadership Profile Report with the community as well as propagating that information throughout the city utilizing your community list of partners. The application closes. All aspirants will have all of the application documentation uploaded into our system September 15th. September 17th, HYA will provide the Board an update. We will present the slate, the set of candidates, the set of aspirants. September 26th. October 9th through the 10th, interview of final candidates. October 13th, Board discusses interviews and the process they're in. Special Board Meeting, August 15th to 22nd, to vote as well as make the public announcement of a Superintendent, and then of course, we move into the transition phase. And so that's the draft timeline before us. Certainly, we want to respect the community and make sure that everyone is aware of this. We're going to work with your communications team to ensure that we're able to get this out to the communities so everyone has their eyes on the timeline. Any thoughts or questions on this before we move to the next slide? Okay, next, next slide.
Director Sargu said praise the Lord. This is a good timeline. So, there you go. No, I think, I know that this has taken a little bit of time to build out, and I appreciate this timeline. I think this is, this is reasonable, and I know that Directors hopefully have the calendar invites or in their inbox or will be coming shortly, so we're saving those, these times because it is a significant chunk of time. So thank you, thank you, Ms. Ali.
All right, next slide. Next steps. Analyze the data. We'll analyze the data as presented based upon all the surveys that we've collected. Draft the Leadership Profile Report. Present the finalized Leadership Profile Report to the Board. We'll present it as a draft. If the Board would like to augment, make corrections, additions, we're more than open. Again, the objective here is to work very collegiately and collaboratively. One of the most important slides, or excuse me, the most important points I'd like to underscore is to share the Leadership Profile Report with the community. It's extremely important to give them an opportunity to review the document and to make certain that they understand that their voices were heard, and it'll be encapsulated therein. And then, of course, it's very important to make sure that the aspirants are avail of the document. In many instances, after reading it, someone may say, Seattle is a phenomenal city, but I might not be the right fit, and we respect that. But then others may read the document and say, this is ideal for me. This community, this system, the challenges, the ups and downs, the peaks and valleys, this is something I want to do. I want to get in here and roll up my sleeves and deliver change on behalf of the families of this community. And so that concludes my update for this afternoon. I look forward to any questions if there are any. Next slide.
Thank you, Mr. Ali. Looking to Board Directors, and just, we're four minutes past public test, five minutes past tough public testimony, so I want to kind of move along. But do we have questions?
Just very briefly, I assume you would let us know if you need anything else from the Board at this time.
Oh, absolutely.
So having, having not heard that, I feel, but I just wanted to confirm, we're sort of waiting for the next date where we will be reviewing things.
Let me just say this, Director. I want to thank you guys for your patience, and also want to thank you for trusting us with this process. But I really want to tip my hat to the President. I've spent a tremendous amount of time with her on the phone as well as working with the staff, and there's nothing I need. I mean, you guys have been very responsive. I couldn't have asked for a much better group to work with. And again, hats off to your staff. I mean, we've been moving mountains and really working diligently within your community.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ali. Appreciate it. All right, then we're going to move into public testimony. We're going to move right along. So, just a quick announcement on public testimony, since I've heard that some folks have had some difficulty signing up for public testimony. Last Board Meeting, we updated our public testimony policies, which means that all of our links on all of our websites have been updated. Oh, for Mr. Ali?
No.
Oh, on public testimony? Okay, hang on, just what?
No, not on public testimony. Yes, public testimony.
Okay, hang on, just one second. So, so we've updated our public testimony policies, and that includes all of our links. So if you had a link from, that you'd saved, or you go back to that same link, it will no longer work. We have a new form to submit public testimony on. In addition, the, the link for the public testimony signup has slightly moved. It used to be at the bottom of the page. Now it's at the top of the page just so folks could hopefully find it more, but I know that has been confusing for folks since that is not what they were normally expecting. You can also, on the Board Meeting page, find it on the sidebar. So just so folks are aware, Director Sargu, you had a quick question?
Yeah, first of all, it's summer. It's not like our, you know, the, the online attendance is packed with hundreds of people. So my request is, like we do for a lot of different things, is to have an email go out to our families stating that we have a new process to sign up. And it should be, anybody regardless of their language should be able to understand what the process is. We can't expect people to figure it out. I can't figure it out, and I've got multiple degrees. It shouldn't take that. So my request, and I'm looking at our chief, is to just send out an email so that every family in the district doesn't have to play the game, how do I do this, and end up failing, which is why we only have one person. So you get to speak for like 20 minutes, because that's about how many people would have signed up.
So, so we've now reached the public testimony portion. Board Policy, I still have to read all this paragraph, so it's going to take me just a second. 1400 Board Meetings provides our rules for testimony. The Board expects the same standard of civility for those participating in public comment. As the Board expects of itself, as Board President, I have the right to and will interrupt any speaker who fails to observe the standard of civility required by our procedure. A speaker who refuses or fails to comply with these guidelines or who otherwise substantially disrupts the orderly operation of this meeting may be asked to leave the meeting. I'm going to pass it off to staff to summarize a few more points and read off the testimony list.
You, President Top. The Board will take testimony from... Apologies. The Board will take testimonies from those on the testimony list, and will go to the waiting list if we are missing speakers. Please wait until called to approach the podium or unmute, and only one person may speak at a time. The Board's procedure provides that most of your time should be spent on the topic you signed up to speak to. Speakers may cede their time to another person, but this must be done when the listed speaker is called. Time isn't restarted, and the total time remains two minutes. The speaker at the podium will indicate, the timer at the podium will indicate the time remaining for speakers here in person. When the light is red and a beep sounds, it means that your time has been exhausted, and the next speaker will be called. For those joining by phone, the beep will be the indication that time has been exhausted. Moving into our list now, for those joining by phone, please press star six to unmute on the conference line. And for everyone else, please do reintroduce yourself when called, as I will miss some pronunciations as we move through today's list. The first speaker on today's list is Matt Burtness.
Did you understand all that, Matt?
Thankfully.
Okay.
I've been born with the privilege of a white man who speaks English, so I can confidently say that, yes, I did. Thank you very much for asking me if I understood. It's really greatly appreciated because I think that's really the crux of this issue. And I say this issue because I came here to speak about support for immigrant students, and that is what I've come here to speak about. But the crux of our issue in SPS, and it doesn't matter if we're talking about the issues right here in this room right now in this moment that I'm talking about, it doesn't matter if we're talking about the School Board search, it doesn't matter if we're talking about whether Mr. Fred Podesta is our interim Superintendent or not. It doesn't matter who's our School Board President is. It doesn't matter who's elected to School Board. Because what I have come to understand through the joy of what is summer vacation is that it's about coalition building, and the people, the leaders, don't matter because they will and they have, and they will continue to fail us. So I'm going to just take a step back for a second. Thank you again, Director Sargu, for the question of asking and understanding and checking for understanding, because that is at the core of my mission as an educator, to check for understanding. My name is Matt Burtness. I am a lifelong, oh man, sorry. I'm a lifelong public educator and defender of public education and defender of children. And that's what this comes down to, and this is what I have tried, for better or for worse, to advocate for in my time with this district. I want to again thank you, Director Sargu, and want to speak directly to you for being direct with me and telling me that I have more time than has been given because I'm the only person on the list. I came with a lot of thoughts and ideas and things I wanted to say, but I'm not going to say a lot of them because this is the crux of the issue, is that you changed the format of public testimony. You changed it. I'm not making a criticism of that. I'm making an acknowledgement of that. And I appreciate you, Director Sargu, for being willing to acknowledge that not you personally, not the School Board, the district made a mistake in not informing our families of a change. And that's where so much, oh, sorry. That's where so much of this anger in the community has come from. And words have meaning, and words have power, and words can be weapons. So before you even so graciously offered me more time, I was going to use the words that I know as weapons, but instead of just using, and here's where I want to get into making connections and making text-to-self connections with my students, because there's a lot of confusing information in the world, especially as it relates... because there's a lot of confusing information in the world, especially as it relates to our modern world. Because facts are fiction and fiction are facts, and you can make anything real if you make enough people believe it. And we are seeing that in very exceedingly real time in this school board race. And I'm not here to name names. I'm not here to shame anyone. I'm not here to call anyone now because that's not the purpose of this bully pulpit. And this is how some members in our community have weaponized this space, the school board meeting space, as bullies. So I'm going to thank you again, Director Sargu, for allowing me time, because what I was going to do in my experience as a union member was say, members of the prestigious Seattle Public Schools School Board, I would like to make a personal point of privilege. If I may?
I think you've got about one minute.
Cool, awesome. So, 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 sorry. Thank you. Thank you for the call out and for stopping me. I want to say sorry, because I have also been guilty of that bullying, and I want to apologize directly to Director Rankin. I'm sorry, because I have been misled and I have been led astray by well-meaning, well-intentioned people who have good intentions. I want to acknowledge that. But impact matters more than intentions. And I'm sorry that I have weaponized my words against you and spoken out against you, because if there's one thing that has stood out to me more, it's how prospective school board candidates have answered the question from the Rainy Day Recess podcast, who are you most looking forward to working with? And so many of them have said, Director Rankin. And so many of them have been, so many of them have had negative words weaponized against them simply for saying they wish to work with someone who has been misrepresented in the community, who at her core, her values, I know that I agree with, because I have seen you stand up and not just dual wield two weapons, two swords, and hit, hit. But I've seen you hold up a shield as well. And that's what we need in this school board, is we need a sword, yes. But we don't just need ruthlessness, because we need shields too. So thank you, Director Rankin, for being a shield. And I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, and I'm sorry for raising my voice. I want to acknowledge again that words have meaning and words have power. I'm sorry, Director Rankin. I want to just say, I, I want...
We're going to, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your call.
Absolutely. I have a lot more to say, and I'd be happy to elaborate more later. But at the crux of the issue, please, people, as you are making and casting your elections in the school board race, please do your research, please read, please do not believe what is being pushed as an agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the consideration. Thank you. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I got so mixed up in my own words, and I forgot to also mention and advocate for the interagency and the issue of interagency in southwest and southeast Seattle, where staff members are being...
Okay. We, we have another person's...
Staff members are being attacked privately because they are trying to stand up for their students, and I forgot that. And I promised, I promised staff that I would mention it, and I didn't. And I'm sorry. I know I'm breaking policy. I'm sorry. But I cannot leave this pulpit without saying that I stand with the interagency staff and students. Please listen. Please meet with the interagency staff and students who do not make any changes without listening to their community. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to the next person on the testimony list. Go to staff here, yes.
They're, they are online, and we, we have the next person on our testimony list.
Our next speaker is Chris Jackins.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. There's also always a signup list at the meeting also. On the action items on the agenda, all items except one appear to be proposed for both introduction and action at the same meeting. This tends to limit due diligence on these items. On proposed instructional site relocations from the Rox Hill Annex, if the site is being closed for instructional purposes, state law requires a school closure process with formal public hearings before the vote, board votes. On the contract for an interim superintendent, two points. Number one, Mr. Podesta is very talented and should be fairly compensated. Number two, but the board may need to consider ways that a single person can do as much as multiple employees. I have one example, if you can get a close-up of a can of spinach with Popeye on it. Thank you, Mr. Podesta. On written testimony to the school board, is the district failing to provide written public testimony to board directors who remotely attend a meeting? On the August 5th primary for school board elections, three points. Number one, I believe that voters should favor candidates who oppose school closures, but this requires some effort by voters to figure out candidates' actual positions. Number two, opposing school closures has become the in thing, but all current board members voted to start a school closure process. Number three, when the process blew up, reactions ranged from willing, writing a strong op-ed against closures to embracing a smaller number of closures, to those who still believe that schools need to be closed. Thank you very much.
All right. That concludes public testimony for the evening. Thank you so much for coming out here. We are going to now move into board action. So we have six board action items, and then we will move to a staff presentation at the tables on, on the strategic plan. So the first item, approval of the 25-26 collective bargaining agreement. Can I have a motion?
Yes. I am the substitute motion maker for ease of, in-person versus remote. Okay, action item one, I move that the Board of Directors approve the 2025-2026 collective bargaining agreement between Seattle Public Schools and International Union of Operating Engineers Local 302, and authorize the superintendent on behalf of the Board of Directors to execute the agreement in the form attached to the school board action report with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the terms of this agreement. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
And we have, I believe, Tina Mead at the dais to give us a brief explanation here.
Good evening, or good afternoon. Tina Mead, Director of Labor Relations for Seattle Public Schools. The contract that collected, the successor CBA that we're asking you to vote for and to approve is a one-year agreement, which essentially is a rollover of the previous CBA with no substantive language changes except for the wage rate. A one-year wage rate, which is the implicit price deflator of 2.5%. The implicit price deflator is essentially the state's cost of living increase. Now, granted, it sounds as though it's a cost of living increase. Unfortunately, the prototypical state model doesn't fully fund that. And so there, as the board action reports indicated, there is still some impact to the budget and an increase to the structural deficit, unfortunately. But it does give a cost of living increase to the employees, the work groups there.
Looking to board directors for questions. Director Rankin.
This might actually be a question for Kurt Butlerman's office, but this, you know, we knew this contract was coming. So is this a change to our projected budget, or was this assumed already in the budget that we approved?
So I don't see Dr. Butlerman, but I think Acting Superintendent Podesta can answer.
And I can answer that, and Dr. Pritchett can answer, yes.
Everybody answer it.
Yes. The IPD is what is calculated into the budget.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you so much, and I'm going to ask staff for the vote.
Vice President Briggs.
Aye.
Director Clark.
Aye.
Director Mizrahi.
Aye.
Director Rankin.
Aye.
Director Sargu.
Aye.
President Topp.
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Moving on to item number two, can I have a motion?
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Vera, Vera? Vera? Thank you. Vera Mobility and the two interlocal agreements with King County as attached to the school board action report with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent to implement these agreements. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
And I think we have Stephen Richard at the podium to present shortly, and then we can move to discussion.
Are you presenting first?
Yes. Hang on just a second. Do we have a microphone on, or is it not working?
It's not.
Nope. Hang on just a second. We may need to do a quick replacement. Or see if it's...
Check, check, check.
There we go.
Thank you. The Washington State Legislature has authorized school districts to use stop paddle cameras on school buses to detect vehicles illegally passing while students are boarding or disembarking. From 2017 until 2022, our contract with Vera Mobility, Seattle Public Schools, to obtain a percentage of the tickets that were verified. We would now like to continue and expand that project. While we cannot be sure of the exact dollar amount this program will bring in, we can report that neighboring districts such as Issaquah and Bellevue have had great success bringing in hundreds of thousands. More importantly, Vera Mobility has data to support that this is an effective deterrent for future offenses. 99% of drivers who were issued and paid a violation did not receive a second. Because there are no upfront costs associated with implementing this program, I hope you will approve this motion so that we can have cameras installed and active for the 25-26 school year. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions from board directors? Director Sargu?
So we don't have paddle cameras on the buses at the moment?
Currently, no.
Okay, so this is about contracting with this company to put paddle cameras on all of our buses?
Correct.
Every single one, right?
Yes, there was a smaller amount previously in years past, and it generated a certain amount of income. But we found that districts who go with 100% coverage have much, have much better success.
I just want to make sure it's not just for certain neighborhoods.
No.
So I want to know that it's all buses everywhere.
You are.
First student in Zoom.
You are correct.
Got it. Okay.
And I just want to add, if I may?
Go ahead.
That generating income is really not the primary goal of this. The primary goal actually is to prevent motorists from violating that stop sign. It's very, very important. Our students, people, you know, when they're pulling around a bus, the visibility is not great. Our children are often running across the street. So really, the intention is to support just as with school zone cameras and in some cases, stoplight cameras, to really reinforce those very important traffic safety measures. If we broke even or even lost a little money on this, it would be worth it because we would be ultimately protecting the lives of our students. But any, the state law requires that any income that we do receive is to be reinvested in student safety. In the past, we have used it to, to pay for crossing guards, which are another important part of our safety infrastructure and ecosystem. But again, the primary purpose is to prevent people in, in a, in a, in a trial run back in 2017, they found that over the course of 117 days on just 10 buses, I think is the figure, there are about 800 instances of people pulling around those stop paddle cameras. So we know that it's something that if there's not, you know, if there's not a sense that there's going to be an outcome, people will violate that law. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Campbell. Questions from other board directors? Director Rankin?
Thank you. I see, I was gonna, so the, the money, you said a portion goes to SPS. It looks like the rest of it goes to King County District Court and Sheriff?
As well as the contractor, yes.
And the contractor?
Yes.
Okay. That leads me to a question that I'm happy to hold if it's not appropriate to answer this right now, but that we also have in terms of student safety and accessing, you know, getting safely to and from school. We have in the past had a contract through King County to issue tickets for speeds, uh, school zone speeding violations. And my understanding is that we haven't actually collected that in a long time because there was nobody at the county staffed to look back through for violators. The county. Look back through for violators and issue the ticket? That seems also like, I mean, I know of a couple kind of hotspots where there have been collisions with students, and it almost always involves speeding. Can we get that back, or could some of this go to bringing that back up? Or is that just a whole other thing that I should just not ask about right now?
I think that's outside of my wheelhouse, but I'm happy to look into it.
Okay, just the, the connection between if this is also in some kind of relationship with the county, and we had this other pre-existing relationship.
Yes.
They had provided the staffing to look through the tapes to flag people for tickets. My understanding is they no longer do that just because of a personnel issue. So that might be an opportunity also, again, not to generate revenue, but to help, to help keep our students safe.
Pass it over here to Acting Superintendent Podesta for a moment.
I believe that's a municipal function, but either way, we'll get the current data on it and, and follow up.
Yes, it is.
Unless Counsel Narver, who worked on it from the city side, cares to elaborate.
Good afternoon. Greg Narver, General Counsel. The, these are separate programs authorized by separate statutes. So the school zone cameras are operated by the city.
Oh, they are operated by the city?
Those are...
Okay, okay, okay.
That's a city function, and I'm going back to my duties at the city attorney's office.
Okay, then the city doesn't check them anymore because they don't have the personnel to do it.
I don't know the status of the city's efforts there, but that's a city-installed program. And again, there's a requirement that the revenues from that go into the Safe Routes to Schools program.
Okay.
This is a separate authorization to school districts to have the paddle cameras on the stop signs on school buses. And our contract with King County is because we, of course, don't have our own court system or prosecutors. We need an enforcement mechanism, so there's one interlocal agreement, interlocal agreement with the county for sheriff services to catch the violators. And then a separate ILA with the prosecutor's office and the district court to pay for the costs of processing the infractions once they, for motorists who contest them.
So the money generated goes to maintain facilitating identifying violators?
As Mr. Richard said, some of the money goes to the vendor, the contractor who operates the cameras. Some goes to the county for the sheriff and the district court and prosecution services. Some comes to the district, and under statute, the money coming back from the district needs to be devoted to student safety and getting to school safely. Correct.
Okay. And is that by statute? The, the, are there, are there restrictions by statute on the money that comes back to the school district? Or is that how we have determined?
No, that, that's a state law requirement.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
And sorry, yes. It was, you're, you're right, Michelle. It was the city and the county.
And if I could add one more thing, and we have some folks here from Vera Mobility. But what they do is they take a screenshot. They verify to make sure that it's a valid violation, that they have all the necessary information, which would be license plate information before they send it on to the King County Sheriff. So the goal is that everything that goes to the King County Sheriff needs to then be validated so that it can be issued as a citation. And as, as Greg Narver said, then if someone wants to contest that violation, then they will work with the King County Prosecutor's Office. But Vera Mobility makes sure that those, those events, those instances are valid before they send them along the way. And we also will watch that data to make sure that we're seeing, you know, that those, those events are being vetted and following through on with the King County Sheriff's Office.
Questions from other board directors? Okay, and look for staff, or call on staff for the vote, please. Hang on just a second. Get a working microphone. Our microphones are not cooperating this evening.
Director Clark?
Aye.
Director Mizrahi?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Sargu?
Director Sargu?
Yes.
Vice President Briggs?
Aye.
President Top?
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Item three on the agenda. Director Rankin?
I move that the school board approve the relocation of the Interagency Academy Southwest Campus, currently located at the Rox Hill Annex, to an acceptable Southwest location, and approve the establishment of a new Interagency Academy site at Allen T. Sugiyama High School. I further move that the school board approve the relocation of a Bridges Program site from the Rox Hill Annex to Chief South International High School. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
Okay. And we have Dr. Campbell at the podium.
Thank you, and good evening, board directors, community members. We also have Principal Willingham online. Principal Willingham, if you can come off mute and come on camera. So, want to acknowledge and recognize the great leadership of Principal Willingham with Interagency. And is Devin Gurley also here? Okay. So, Dr. Torres Morales is out of town, so I told him that I would bring this forward and respond to any questions. I have been part of some of the planning around this. So, essentially, we know that the old Rox Hill Annex, and, and, good evening, I can see Principal Willingham, there have been some issues with the facility, not feeling like a place that feels like it has all of the supports and services that our students and staff need. So, this is something that we've been working on to find new spaces for our wonderful students and staff who are at those locations. We did look at the possibility of moving our Southwest Interagency students to a location that was not in the Southwest, and that was clearly something that was going to be challenging. We looked at several options, and Southwest Youth and Family Services is currently the place that we are looking at. We are working with them right now on what, how that contract would be established and making sure that we have the right learning spaces for our students. We did tour Southwest Youth and Family Services last week with staff members from Interagency as well as staff members from our capital team. They were very excited about that location and the possibility. Interagency, as you know, is often aligned with agencies throughout the city in order to give students access to additional services and support. So, it's a good alignment location. Our Bridges students, those are our students who are working on independent living skills and gainful employment skills, are 18- to 22-year-old students. Ideally, are in spaces where they are independent of the K-12 environment. We have located a place on campus at Chief South High School that enables them to have an independent space, but also has access to public transportation, work sites, things that our students are utilizing regularly. And they also have access to things like hot lunch and other services that are available on that comprehensive school campus. So, those moves, all of these moves, we believe, are going to be in the best interest of our students and staff. And we've worked, met with staff members, actually, Interagency staff and Bridges staff have met with and talked to students and families as well about these upcoming moves. And we've done some phenomenal work, and Principal Willingham and her team in the last few weeks have really reached out to staff members to make sure that they're fully informed of these moves.
Thank you so much, Dr. Campbell, and thank you for joining us. Principal Willingham, looking at board directors for questions. Director Rankin?
Can you please confirm? Because it's been the source of a lot of back and forth and questions about the presence of accessible bathrooms at the Chief South location.
Yes. So, there are...
And not just the presence near them, but like for them?
Correct. So, there are several solutions right now. The intent is to provide a bathroom specifically for students, but that is going to take a little bit of transition time, but that is in the plan with the capital team. But we do have an accessible bathroom to support our students that is available very close to where they will be located with the intention of actually building out that facility and space for the students.
So, when they first get there at the beginning of the school year, they'll need to go from the portables into the high school building to use a bathroom?
Correct.
And one then eventually will be provided for them in the portables? They don't have to do that?
Correct.
How long do we think that period of time is?
I don't know the exact timeframe, but we can certainly find that out. I think the idea is to expedite it as quickly as possible.
My understanding is the portables are already plumbed. I'm not a plumber, but I also know it doesn't take a ton of time to install a toilet and a stall. So, I would hope that that could happen as quickly as possible, especially because the plumbing is already there. And then I, the second request, I know students in Bridges Program deserve their own place to be. They're not high schoolers. They finished high school. They're transitioning now from school to independent adulthood. And so, I really want to, this kind of goes to the bigger issue of what we're being presented with right now is a logistical problem. And it is following the policy based on use of space, and there's nothing in here that actually has to do with meeting the needs of our students. And so, the bigger issue, that's not just for this bar, and I will be approving this because I don't, I have been to the Rox Hill Annex building. I don't quite understand why these programs were moved to that building to begin with after it was deemed unsuitable for elementary students. And so, I don't know, I don't know how that happened. But, so, I am supporting this because I think this is a better solution. It's still not the solution, and we need to have very clear conversations about not where programs move to, but what they are and who they serve, and make sure that we're building sustainability around them for Bridges, for Interagency. I mean, it's not just that Interagency has a history of working with other organizations. That's literally why it exists, is Interagency with another agency. And they actually used to be at Southwest Family Services, and then they got moved to Youngstown Cultural Center, and then they got moved to Rox Hill Annex. I don't know why. And so, that's great that they're moving back to Southwest Family Services. I also would be, would really like to know more information about why that partnership, what caused the move in the first place, and if whatever caused the move is going to become a problem again? Like, I don't know. Maybe there was a change in organizational leadership, and now this is another possibility. But I would like to understand, again, I will vote to approve this, but I still would like to understand, and I will keep asking if I don't, if we don't get an answer, why that, what happened with that relationship in the first place that caused that move, and make sure that whatever that was is being fully addressed by our end. So that either that becomes the new permanent home, because that is a really good location and organization to partner with, or that we are thoughtful about where the permanent home may be, that we don't just keep, I mean, I know it won't be the exact same students, but it's the, those hurts kind of carry forward.
Absolutely.
So...
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you for that. And I have noted that question, and I will say that we are establishing a comprehensive planning team with capital, with programs, services, and then enrollment to do the very thing that you're talking about, which is to create a more mindful process. So, for some of these services and programs that are, they're not exactly aligned with a specific school building, but we want to make sure that it doesn't feel like they're always having to row from place to place and find some available corner in a school or in the city. But that also goes for some of our preschool programs and some of our special education services, so that we actually have a logic that prioritizes our students who, for whom we want to really do some of the most thoughtful care work.
And even possible future option programs that are actually alternative educational experiences to a standard neighborhood school?
Okay. Thank you. Director Sargu?
My comments are an extension of what Director Rankin, some of, a couple of the points that she landed on. Terms like acceptable vague time periods, my experience with that has been, I'll just use the interpreter situation. It took months of me throwing a hissy fit to have interpreters at every meeting. And so, I'm not comfortable with vague language. When I think about a child or a young adult needing to use the bathroom, somebody who has a physical disability, our track record makes me believe that they're just going to have to hold it because they won't be able to get to the bathroom in time. And so, I need specificity. When are basic functional toilets going to be accessible to these students? There should be a definitive timeline for that. None of us would accept an out of, bathrooms being out of service here with a vague timeline of when we might be able to have a bathroom that's not a porta potty. And so, when I, I'm expressing a little bit of frustration because I feel like sometimes vague language is intentionally used to avoid accountability. I'm telling you what my feeling is. And my feeling actually matches what has happened in the district. So, what I would like to know is a definitive timeline. We should be able to know, and really, it should be done before school starts.
Yes. Thank you. Let me be clear. Functional toilets are currently available. In most of our schools that have portables, we don't have toilets inside the portable. Students do go inside. Where the portables are located is adjacent directly next to, and I don't have this, the footage, but it's a very short walk, two adaptive restrooms that are part of a classroom that provides more intensive services. So, those toilets are available to students right now. The ask from the staff, which I think is a reasonable ask, is could we also provide some additional restroom space that is specifically for our Bridges students? That is what we are currently building. But there are currently restrooms available to our students that are, I mean, there are a number of restrooms throughout the building, but that are specifically adaptive, that have some of the equipment and tools and features that some of our students will require. Those are currently available. I don't think that we would move them without it. An acceptable Southwest location, I appreciate you calling that out. Our goal is to have that contract in place. I think that we want to make sure, you know, that that is ready to go, but we are moving forward with haste on that so that it is ready to go by the start of the school year. So, I appreciate the urgency, though.
Can I go back to the bathroom?
No. We're going to take just a brief moment here. We've lost the ASL interpreter, so we're going to wait for a moment and get the ASL interpreter back on. Looks like, can we, can we...
Here? Can you guys see me? Got a blue backdrop?
All right. And it looks like folks online can see. All right. Director Sargu, you had a follow-up question?
So, is it not possible for you to give a date? I think what I'm struggling with here is I don't get the sense that, what I'm struggling with is the inability to actually say, you know, by the third week of school, the request will be handled. Because when you, when you don't give specificity, you can just drag it out. And so, what I'm, you know, I don't go to school there. I'm not in that building, but I don't have a lot of confidence based on my own personal experience when we're not being specific. And so, is it, why, why is there a struggle to say our plan is to have these bathrooms done by a certain date?
I'm sure that there is a date. I just don't know that date. I will find out from our capital team and email to you all.
Okay. Thank you.
I just was not prepared to identify that date tonight, but I absolutely would get that.
So, I think that's...
Yep.
Yeah. That highlights the problem with vague language. Right. And so, when you bring that here, and not you personally, but you force us to ask specific questions. So, I just want to point that out.
Right. And then, thank you. Yep.
I just want to say, I appreciate, I know that I'm excited about the possibility of Interagency being at Southwest Youth and Family Services, and appreciate the movement from staff to respond to both community and the board in saying, what can we do better here? And this is, this is my community, and I'm excited for that partnership and that alignment. So, thank you. But looking at other board directors, otherwise, I'm going to turn it over and call on staff for the vote.
Director Mizrahi?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Sargu?
Yes.
Vice President Briggs?
Aye.
Director Clark?
Aye.
President Top?
Yes.
This motion is passed unanimously.
All right. Moving on to item number four. Can I have a motion?
I have a blank where there's the four. Okay. It's not, it's not, it goes to five. But I move, I move that the school board approve awarding refuse disposal and mixed waste recycling collection services contract to Republic Services for RFP 052501. Is there anything else I need to say legally? That's not, it's not on my... Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
All right. Thank you. And we have Frank Griffin at the podium, who will present.
Good evening. Frank Griffin, Director of Facilities Operations. So, before you, we have a contract for refuge and recycling for the three-year cycle. We went out with an RFP. Republic Services was the low bid, but also provided additional services that we were interested in. One of them was the capacity just to handle the entire school district, the ability to respond to special pickups, the ability to provide dumpsters when we had special events or needed them for construction. Additionally, we were looking for dumpsters that were rear-loaded to where custodial staff could load them from the loading docks, reducing OJI injuries. So, there were a lot of things that we were looking for that Republic Services provided. I would take questions.
Questions from board directors? Thank you so much. And I'm going to look to staff for the vote.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Sargu?
Yes.
Vice President Briggs?
Aye.
Director Clark?
Aye.
Director Mizrahi?
Aye.
President Top?
Aye.
This motion passes unanimously.
Item number five. Director Rankin?
All right. I move that the school board approve the 2025-2026 Compensation Bulletin for Nonrepresented Staff as attached to this school board action report with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and authorize the superintendent to take any necessary actions to implement the document. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
We have Dr. Sarah Pritchett at the podium to present.
Good afternoon. Again, Sarah Pritchett, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. As a reminder, the Compensation Bulletin defines the compensation parameters for nonrepresented employees. The change this year to the Compensation Bulletin includes edits to what we would say is IPD or Cost of Living. That edit is, or that change is going to reflect the 2.5% as stated, as set by the state. This would also continue the two furlough days for our 260 employees and one furlough day for our 230-day nonrepresented staff. It also suspends the ability for nonrepresented staff to cash out their vacation as well, and that continues again for the third year.
Questions from directors? Director Rankin?
Sorry. I'm just trying to confirm who all this covers. Is it just building leaders?
Nonrepresented staff. So, building leaders are represented by PAFs.
Oh, oh, okay.
This would be primarily people who work in the John Stanford Center.
Thank you. And is it, sorry that I'm not remembering. Is it typical one year, or are we doing one year now to kind of mirror the... Or are we doing one year now to kind of mirror the?
It is every year.
Okay.
We make adjustments every year.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, I'm gonna call on staff for the vote.
Director Sargu.
Yes.
Vice President Briggs.
Aye.
Director Clark.
Aye.
Director Mizrahi.
Aye.
Director Rankin.
Aye.
President Top.
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Item number six.
I move that the school board authorize the board president with the assistance of legal counsel to negotiate an employment contract with Fred Podesta to serve as interim superintendent until the appointment of the next district superintendent or June 30th, 2026, whichever occurs first. The negotiated contract shall be presented to the board for approval. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
Great. So I will be introducing this bar for action. This board action will allow me, as board president, to negotiate a contract with our acting superintendent to continue on as interim superintendent while we continue our search for a superintendent. How many times can I say superintendent in one sentence? Acting Superintendent Podesta has been really great in filling in here as we've needed him and is getting ready for the upcoming school year, and I'm grateful for his continued leadership. This would allow me to try to negotiate a contract, and then we would bring it back to the board for approval at our August meeting. And I will take questions from board directors. Director Sargu.
I don't have a question, but I have a request that it also, that the negotiation include the board president and the vice president. I think having another voice at the table will ensure that all of us are represented. And I'm saying that for a specific reason, which I do not need to identify on the record, but my request is that it include two people.
I am more than happy to have Vice President Briggs join in in the conversations and the negotiations. I heard a request, not an amendment, though? Is that correct?
I don't really get this whole Roberts business. So is it an amendment, or is it, you just do it?
If you want our vote as a board to be authorizing the board president with the vice president.
Okay, that's what I want.
You wouldn't make an amendment.
Okay.
If you don't make an amendment, I mean, we're all in public, and I believe Gina.
Okay, well, so let's do, let's just follow the formal, because Greg's getting ready to come up here.
He's gonna see, we're gonna see if we properly noticed this, I guess, to allow for this to happen.
Can we make a small amendment?
Yes, I would reintroduce the motion. I think if we withdraw the motion in its current form, reintroduce it with the motion language adding that it will be authorization to the president and vice president with the assistance of legal counsel, who I should specify will be outside counsel representing the board. That's not my role. And that those people will be empowered. Well, the purpose of this vote is to make sure that the full board has authorized a smaller number of people, so we don't run into OPMA issues with the negotiation sessions. I think if the motion is reintroduced with that extra name, that that covers it. And if there's a second, and then that will be the motion that the board votes on.
All right, so let's go to Director Rankin here.
We don't, we don't need to vote to withdraw the other motion, right? We can just, okay. So I, an amendment has been presented. Therefore, I move that the school board approve, no, sorry, the school board authorized the board president and vice president, together with the assistance of legal counsel, to negotiate an employment contract with Fred Podesta to serve as interim superintendent until the appointment of the next district superintendent or June 30th, 2026, whichever occurs first. The negotiated contract shall be presented to the board for approval. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
So can I make one?
Gotta have a second real fast.
Oh, second.
And then we can.
Second, wow.
I apologize to Vice President Briggs. I just voluntold her, are you okay with that, me doing that? I did not consult, sorry.
You, yeah, no, I'm totally, I, I'm, it's part of my job, I'm all good.
Okay.
Thanks for checking.
Just so we don't have to do something else, because she, she might have said, you don't get to boss me around.
No, you totally get to boss me around, Michelle.
So we have a motion and a second. Other questions? Yes.
I have, well, so the, the current acting appointment is under the contract that was issued to, or agreed upon with Dr. Jones that terminates September 3rd, based on his notice of resignation. So what is our timing for when a contract would come back? And is there opportunity between now and then to, or is this the opportunity to discuss anything we might want to see in that contract as the board?
So I think the goal would be to bring it back per the bar on our, at our August 27th meeting. I think that if there are specific things, I think getting them to Director Briggs and I would be extremely helpful, or if there are items that you would like to talk about that you think would be important.
Sure. So I, just for full transparency, I was making notes for myself, and then I just decided, making notes for myself, then it ended up being five pages. And I did email them to the board earlier today, and they're printed out for us today, and I think are being added to the meeting minutes if anybody wants to have them. But my, the thing that I want to make sure we address is that our expectations for Mr. Podesta, that this isn't, like, it's not like things are going super swimmingly, and he can just sort of be a caretaker until somebody new steps in. Like, there are some things that we need to make sure happen regardless of interim, permanent, et cetera, et cetera. And so in, so this, this, my notes are just stating what I believe we heard from the community, and I think are continuing to hear, although we'll get an update from HYA, about the priorities of our system. And then we've, we have already adopted goals and guardrails that help us evaluate the effectiveness of our system in aligning with what we've said. We, trying to, we have no, we got, we got, okay, so say you're getting your house ready to sell. You want to paint the shutters, you maybe want to replace the porch, get some cute flowers and stuff, but if you don't make sure that your plumbing doesn't leak and your electric's up to code, it's gonna be hard. It's gonna sit on the market for a long time. So that's my analogy. So I would like to make sure that for the progress that we were elected to, the leadership we were elected to provide, the progress we need to make as a district, and the, the best potential we have to set an incoming superintendent up for success, is we need to do some plumbing and wiring checks and maybe look in at the foundation. And those are things that can and should happen now. We shouldn't say, well, we'll just wait for the next superintendent, because we've, we've, to be quite frank, squandered a lot of time over the last couple of years on will they, won't they do these things? And we haven't gotten very realistic about problems that have to be solved. We're not like a legislature or a city council where we can say, well, maybe let's think about new revenue, or maybe, we don't get to do that. Other people authorize how much money we have to spend, and we have to figure out how to serve students within it. We can keep advocating that that increase, but we have to deal with what we are given. And we got some, so I almost swore, some serious, serious things that we need to do to best our students and our community, and to make sure that a new soup, that we are creating conditions and a stable, transparent scenario for a new superintendent to come into so that they can be successful. And so I just want us to be, so in my notes here, I've been doing a whole bunch of reading and research. Real transformational change of a school district takes like six to eight years. Now, some people might say, oh, but you voted for this thing in 2021. All we did was vote to think about it. We've done a lot of thinking about it, and as proven in the audit that was done by an independent firm in December of 2024, change didn't happen. We talked about change. We didn't enact much change. And yes, I'm referring to student outcomes-focused governance, which is, by the way, just Kleenex to tissue for board governance aligned with best practices. So we, as a board, need to make a commitment to doing our job for real. And we need to authorize and allow Mr. Podesta to make some big changes, both with budget alignment, with staffing, with, with, I mean, we don't, staff evaluation, all kinds of things, or we're just gonna continue on. And our kids can't afford it, and I can't stomach it personally. I can't last up here another two years not doing the things we say we're gonna do, which, yes, as Michelle said, is maybe the point. Exhaust me, exhaust us all, so that we don't have to make any changes. So based on the real commitment to change that has to happen, we need to get really serious about some, we don't want, if we don't expect Fred to fix everything, but we, as a board, should provide direction about, here's the priorities, and we, even though he knows he's in the role temporarily, we need to make sure that we're all in alignment about what kind of moves can and can't happen. Because we also don't want Fred to take, you know, any leadership to go down some road irrevocably, where a new person might come in and be like, oh, my gosh, that's not how I would have approached that, and now I can't do that. But we do need to say, yeah, our organizational chart does not make any sense, does not align. We need to address that. We, you know, there's tons of outstanding reviews and audits and recommendations that have been made to this district that have not been implemented. Not everything's gonna still be relevant, but some of it is a really good starting place on getting us to a place of function. And so there's a lot that could happen. I am, and I am expecting that January from the timeline, January would be the earliest we'd have a permanent superintendent, I don't, I don't know, starting, and they would still need a long period of transition. Maybe, maybe they would come at the end of legislative session, maybe they're in contract somewhere else, and they would come in in June. The timeline doesn't matter as much as the clarity about what we need to see happen and what we, as a board, are gonna commit to doing over the next school year. So I don't know. There's, there's, there's notes here, I don't know how to, you know, I don't think we need like a line-by-line, you will do this, 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 but an agreement about the scope of what it means for Fred to be the interim superintendent. And then the technical question that I have, that maybe Greg is for you, is we are legally required to evaluate the superintendent annually and to have an adopted evaluation instrument? So what does, in a time where we have an outgoing superintendent, an interim, and then we're gonna have an incoming, hopefully before the next school year, what's our obligation to the evaluation? And, and, yeah. And how do we work that with an interim?
That's a really good question.
Thank you.
And I'll tell you, it's one we've already started batting about in legal. I would encourage the board to take that up with the outside counsel, who will be advising the board.
Okay.
I can't tell you there's a crystal-clear answer.
I can also ask Wasda. We're not the first district to have this happen.
Right. It's, we recognize it's an issue, we'll need to sort it out. Part of it is just lining up the timeline, but you, you're absolutely correct. It's a statutory obligation, and we can't just pretend it's not there, but it does make it difficult to implement when there is this transition underway. I do not have an answer for you right now.
Okay. The last thing I will say is that as we directed as a board in 2023, and then again in 2024 in December, we need a real preliminary budget that does not look like the last three years' budgets. We need a real preliminary budget with structural changes to it in January. No matter when the superintendent comes on. So that is something that I want to make sure is clear in whatever agreement, is that budgeting for '26, '27 starts now. That can't.
And I assume some of that is work that we'll be doing in the ad hoc committee.
Well, we're talking about, no, not really. Well, we're talking about timing of who need, you know, when to do.
Yeah, but I think that timeline is.
Is related, but I will say that it is standard practice and something we have demanded. And then not hold people accountable for. We've got to have a preliminary with a variety of scenarios, January, if we're gonna have anything real. And so, yeah, we can't just hold on that till I have somebody else.
Other board directors? All right, call on staff to call the vote.
We're calling the vote on the amended one, right?
Yep. Vice President Briggs.
Aye.
Director Clark.
Aye.
Director Mizrahi.
Aye.
Director Rankin.
Clarifying question. My comments and questions is the next thing to do is look at the contract as, as presented? Or do we need to do something in between now and then to?
I think we're, let's, we're voting, and I think it would be that Director Briggs and I work on the contract language to bring before the board.
Okay, that's, I don't want to vote yes without making sure that, that was not just me just talking into the ether. It's a real thing. Yes.
Director Sargu.
Yes.
President Top.
Yes.
This motion has passed unanimously.
All right, we're gonna move to the last item on the agenda. We're gonna move to the tables, which means we're gonna take a quick five-minute break. So we will be back at 6:15. And the last item, we will hear from staff about the strategic planning process.
Join back together and have our update draft strategic plan process. I, I am, I am excited. I read through the slides. I am, I'm ready, I'm prepared, or as prepared as I'll ever be. And I'll pass it over to Acting Superintendent Podesta.
So should we, if everybody's read the slides, maybe we should go straight to questions. No, I, we know we are the last thing between everyone here and, and a beautiful summer evening. So we'll be quick, but tell, yeah, tell us to slow down if we need to. I'm going to kind of go back over the process a little bit and describe where we are in it, ask Eric Gersi to drill down into some specific uses of the data that we're gathering, and walk through an example of how this will manifest in specific strategic actions, and then also describe other, another plan from another district that also employs policy governance and has kind of worked that into the strategic plan. And then we'll ask Chief Redman to talk about the engagement, the staff engagement associated with this plan anchored in the Stakeholder Advisory Group, or Task Force, that you, I know, support us creating, and then how that will be augmented with other, potentially with other types of engagement. So, and let's see if my jinx on this thing has been resolved. I can actually, for some reason, I always have trouble. So what we're trying to do is just give you status that we're probably at midpoint, maybe a little bit past in this process. So we just want to describe what we've done, give you some, and we're not going to go too deep into the substance of the information we learned, but giving you some top-level findings and then where we are in the process and what to expect going forward. We, it's good to remind ourselves, so why are we doing this? You know, it's good to always have a map. If you're trying to get somewhere, you know, have a, have a direction and a focus and to remind yourself what the priorities are. Seattle Public Schools is not an enormous organization, but it's big and complex enough that we're responding to things all day, every day. And having a North Star that reminds you, so what's important? You know, how do, how do you make decisions? How do you allocate resources? What, what is going to guide us today? We've highlighted the aligned resources with priorities. I think some of these questions came up on the diocese in the previous conversation. The structure of the strategic planning work that we're talking about really, one of the aspects of the technical work is looking our, at our baseline state of how we allocate resources now. We all know we have resource issues and financial realities we need to deal with. So we just think that we really need this plan to show how we're going to reallocate resources, how we're going to work with a structural deficit and kind of diminish resources. Because the, what we're all expecting is better student outcomes with perhaps fewer resources. So the all-important question is, you know, what are you doing with what you have? And is, is every effort we make the highest and best use for the resources that we have? So that's why I put a box on this slide, just to remind ourselves that that is the punchline. The, the other bullets are the why, and the punchline is, so, so what's the answer going to lead you to do? So we, again, the, you know, typically strategic planning processes start with identifying vision and values, and the board has done that work in concert with the community. And that's what's led to the goals and guardrails that we're using to guide this work. What we've been working on in the spring and right now, through right now, is identifying our current use of resources. We're developing what we're calling a fact base about the current state of the district and that we want to understand kind of the potential rates of return for the way we're allocating resources now. We're moving into a step where, based on those findings and the goals and guardrails, we're having staff identify priorities that, you know, what are the priority areas that we need to focus, focus on that will lead to the strategic work that we intend to do? I should have noted this in an earlier slide, but we're thinking the final deliverable as a draft strategic plan, understanding that we need to be flexible and agile as new leadership comes to the district and the board. So we want to make sure that whatever the timeline is for these transitions, that we give leaders a toolkit to make the changes that are going to ultimately support students and achieve the student outcomes that you all have identified in concert with the community. So in terms of process, again, we started this spring on a diagnostic analysis that identifies resources that are in place, identifies, looks at our org structure, the coherence of our strategies. We say we've been doing things and identified priorities over the years. This is really a kind of a truth check that are we allocating resource the way we think we do? And then why our partners in ERC are really helpful is they can help us benchmark that data against districts across the country. So are resources aligned with the goals that we previously stated? And are they, are there big variances between how we do things and how other districts do things? And what learning can be made by that? Staff have begun in several sessions, looking through and, and walking through those resource allocations and kind of the questions that they all raise, and have led to facilitated discussions about, so what would our priority areas be in terms of how we allocate staff, how we allocate resources, how we're organized to, to start thinking about? So where are the priorities? I think in that set, some, this will be a little bit of an iterative discussion because I think we may identify some gaps that, well, we, for, for whatever reason, staff sees this is a high priority that is not immediately easy to map back into the goals and guardrails. So we may have a discussion, is this something, you know, how do we adapt? How do we understand how any of staff priorities support the goals and guardrails? Or is there something that we just need to all clarify? We're talking a lot about our finances. That's implicit in this, that we need to think about allocating resources. The goals and guardrails don't actually say a lot about finances per se. They, they talk about equitable distribution. And so those are things where we might identify things that, hey, from a staff level, this is really important, but we'd really want to have a transparent discussion with the board if we see any kind of misalignment, so we can talk through that. And then the kind of identifying these priority areas will then, that'll be enhanced with actual strategic initiatives and work that, that we can lead to real projects. What are the actual tasks? What are the actual organizational changes we made, need to make? What are the resource realignments we need to make to achieve those goals? And explain to the board and the community why we think that will be successful and why they can be measured in the interim goals and guardrail metrics that we're also talking about. And so again, it's just worth reinforcing the hierarchy of this, that we're starting with goals and guardrails, that that is the broad vision. The board's been very clear about the direction that they expect staff to follow and what they expect to see with regard to outcomes for students. We're using that in, in concert with this diagnostic tool, which is giving us a, so what are we working on now? What's working and not working? And where are our resources aligned? And what has been successful or not with other districts? Where are we seeing correlations or not between our current strategies and kind of overall performance in a, a model that is neutral and not built on the way we write budgets, but that really is, gives us a clearer kind of school-based picture of how we allocate resources? Those priorities will live, lead to a kind of a menu of strategic initiatives that we'll continue to talk to the board. And that's, depending on the timing of our leadership transition, that is a great way to think of it, as a menu, that, you know, depending on the timing, the new administration is on board, they have choices that they can finalize and refine. If we need to get further, the budget doesn't wait for anybody. So we have decisions that we have to make, and we'll try to, you know, do what we need to do, but retain that flexibility for incoming leadership. So I think I'll, at this point, turn it over to Eric, kind of walk into a little bit more detail, unless Director Sarge wants to ask a question now.
Well, how many more slides?
A handful, not a, not a ton.
Okay, a handful, is that like five? It's 10, that's two handfuls.
There you go.
So I just want to point out. Very different than a handful. Okay, I, I'll just, I'll try to keep my question in my mind.
Eric talks twice as fast as I do.
Okay, go, go, take it away.
His 10 is my 5.
I will try to keep up with the promised speed. So thank you, Mr. Podesta. Just to kind of talk through, this is an example framework of how the various components that we just went through hang together kind of in a coherent plan. And what it looks like in another district, we chose Charlotte Mecklenburg intentionally because this is a district that leverages a similar governance structure as Seattle Public Schools. And in fact, Director Rankin, in attending the Council of Great City Schools Conference, has sent us their work back as an example for us to hold up and consider. And if you were to go on the website and look through Charlotte's plan, you'd notice it's not perfect, but it's an example of a way to structure a plan. And what they actually do is they have sequenced initiatives over five years where you can see exactly when in that time span they'll be implementing various initiatives. And they're poured out on an annual basis, both as a district and at the departmental level, how they're aligning across those initiatives. So this is just an example of how the framework hangs together based on the preceding components. So what progress have we made towards filling in that chart and developing those components? We've started again with our diagnostic analysis, which is going to provide us with, again, a shared fact base. And based on that diagnostic analysis, as Mr. Podesta mentioned, we've begun to develop priorities. And I'm going to kind of walk us through how we've done that in a second here. In alignment with the priorities that are beginning to emerge, we have some strategies that are either underway or that we're considering and contemplating, and we're lining those up with the draft strategies. And we're beginning to see how that all sort of molds together in the theory of action, which is the glue for the plan for how we believe that we can achieve the outcomes that the board has charged us with pursuing. And we're not doing that in isolation, but we're doing that in conjunction with the community through targeted questions and input opportunities. And Bev's going to go through a little bit of what that's looked like to date. On the next slide, you can see we've referenced the diagnostic analysis a number of times thus far. Well, what exactly are we talking about? We've had three really deep opportunities to interrogate a set of questions that we think are vital for equitable resource distribution and for the future of Seattle Public Schools. We've worked, as Fred mentioned, with a third party that works with school districts across the country. And what that's allowed us to do is not only look at, compare ourselves against the state of Washington and against longitudinal trends over time, but also to look at how other districts across the country are allocating their resources and where there are similarities and when there are, where there are differences. And that's not to say that differences are bad, but we'd want to know why those differences exist. There's a series of questions on the screen here that together form, again, that shared fact base. We will be bringing back to the board in a work session that we are currently scheduling answers to these questions. So we all, as a governance team, have that shared fact base. And we're also going to be creating a publicly, public-facing document that's, we're close to finalizing so that the community can see sort of where we are with regard to our resource distribution. We're also going to go into an even deeper dive on some of these questions with specific content tailored for the ad hoc budget committee. The board has asked to sort of understand in greater depth specific components of the budget, and we're going to get into some of that. So as we begin to address the questions on the previous screen about resource distribution across time, people, and money, there are sort of a set of what we'll call emerging findings that are coming to the forefront of our analysis. And these emerging findings are connected to the goals and guardrails and are shaping some of what we're seeing. And all of these emerging findings have very specific resource components and are probably unsurprising to many directors, community members, students, staff, because these are based on reality, so it shouldn't be surprising. But we have, just to kind of briefly walk through the findings, the sort of human capital and educator distribution across the district has variations based on years of experience that educators have, backgrounds of educators, the evaluation levels that educators are receiving across the district and how that's distributed in our schools. The sort of second emerging finding regards student course access and performance. So what courses are students accessing based on in-school factors, across-school factors, and individual student-level factors? The third, third finding is related to school-level coherence and where there are sort of non-negotiables and areas of autonomy in schools. So where are we seeing similarities and not? And to the extent that those are deliberative or not. The fourth emerging finding regards sort of our structural, the fact that we, again, have a fiscal deficit and that there are some structural revenue and expenditure challenges both now and in the future that we're facing. And finally, that we have some challenges with strategy implementation and organizational incoherence. And part of that has, has been mentioned tonight is due to how resources are distributed across the organization. We've sort of done a little bit of a deep dive into professional development is one area where there's sort of resources scattered across the organization that could be leading to some inconsistencies in the student and staff experience. So again, we started with those questions on the slide before this. Those, these are some of the emerging findings in response to those questions. These findings are beginning to shape a set of pri- of priorities that we can kind of see on the bottom left here. The data suggests that there's a variety of priorities that are beginning to emerge. We know that there are priorities that live outside of the data, and the data is a good starting point. We want to take it seriously. We want to be really intentional about how we look at it, but we want to go beyond the data through working with our community, conducting other qualitative engagement efforts, looking at previous studies that have been conducted, as Director Rankin referenced, that may bubble up some priorities and then consolidate those into some draft recommended priorities that, again, as Mr. Podesta has mentioned, we'll continue to iterate on. Just to take us back one slide, we can see emerging finding two, variation in student course access and performance. I'm just going to kind of talk us through how that finding could lead to a potential priority in alignment with the goals and guardrails as one of those priorities that come from the diagnostic analysis. Again, one of the emerging findings is that there's variation in student course access and performance. We've made some progress on this, in this area, over the last several years. And this slide has a lot of words, but the core, the core theme is that there's still disparities that exist, and we want to begin to unpack why some of those disparities exist. One way that we've looked at that is just looking at the math. This is, this is one example. It's the math pathway across Seattle Public Schools. If you're interested in AP Calculus, and we're not saying all students should take AP Calculus, but we're saying all students should have the opportunity to take AP Calculus if that's something that they're interested in, it shouldn't be, there shouldn't be barriers in place for them to do so. This is one snapshot. There's many different ways to look at the data. It's not longitudinal or cohort-based, but it's a snapshot of a particular year. And we can see significant barriers and disparities across race, ethnicity, that emerge and actually widen across the pathway to AP Calculus. And that points us to a potential priority, which is in sort of that middle box around coherent, rigorous, and differentiated academics. Another potential priority around setting a clear academic vision and implementing it. Those are slightly different entry points into similar priority areas around teaching and learning. And we've worked to understand what some other best practices are in districts to address some of the disparities that are widening that we might see. And we've sort of begun to unpack key questions. So that's just pulling back the curtain a little bit on the work that we've been doing as a staff to shape some of the priorities. And we talk about potential priorities and potential actions because we don't want to do this alone, and we want to be working alongside key stakeholders. And I'm going to pass it over to Chief Redmond to share a little bit about how we've been doing that.
All right. And Michelle, I know you have a question. Come on now. I have three slides, I promise.
There's got to be some connections.
Some connection points. So before you, on whether you're looking at your printout or whether you're looking at the screen, speaking about the Stakeholder Advisory Task Force, which the board asks us to put in place, we are happy to say that that representative group of students, staff, families, and community members did have its first orientation meeting this past July 15. And we've tentatively scheduled some additional meetings for them to meet monthly to advise or give input on priority setting and how we engage on this particular plan. We may need to bring them together more often or longer, just depending on how long we stay in the transition phase to a new leader. So they are poised and ready. When we started working with them during this orientation session, I want to say that we use the goals and guardrails, as has been mentioned, and I want to say, as our firm North Star. This was not a chance or a space for us to reinvent those. Those have already been established. So we wanted to make sure that that was a clear point, a clear base of knowledge for them as they began to really get into, or will begin to get into, this work. We certainly appreciate those who did attend and were able to come to this initial meeting. Felt like it was well-received. The lived experiences and expertise of our community will be critical as we continue to move into the strategic plan. Moving on to our next slide, other possible ways. As we're continuing to calibrate through transition, we're not trying to get too far ahead of ourselves, want to make sure that we're being flexible. But some additional ways, in addition to the task force, could be community surveys, could be community listening and learning meetings as well, or understanding sessions, as well as utilizing community-focused groups to really vet the plan as it comes more to life. And then moving on to our last one, and then we'll get into questions and comments as we're looking ahead. We want this particular draft to become that roadmap or that guideline for the next person coming in, knowing that we want to plow out some ground and be ready for someone to come in and take this and make it his, her, their own. And we look forward to bringing more information to the board as we, as we move forward through this particular process. Again, engagement incredibly important. This is our first foray at really putting the task force out there. The connection points were important so that when we come back together, they'll be able to dive more into work rather than still try to do a lot of wayfinding. So, thank you so much for your time, and we're opening for questions and comments. And I know Michelle was eager, but I heard microphones popping on across. Okay.
Because that's the camera, right?
There.
Where's the camera?
Right in front of us.
I think it's over here.
Oh, will it catch me if I stand my seat so the interpreter can see me talking?
It should.
It should. Mm-hmm.
Oh, look at that. I can see that by the rest.
Okay, so some of you may have seen me like frantically circling stuff.
Circling, yes.
I'm, I'm going to do my best to be succinct and connect threads. However, I will admit that I, I have a little frustration. It's not, I'm not yet currently hotter than fish grease, and I don't want to get there.
Okay.
So, some, first of all, great presentation. It is a validation to me that I'm actually not crazy, and that the things we've been saying are actually true because you, I'm assuming you didn't put lies and falsehoods in this slide deck. So I just want to start there. I appreciate the detail, the transparency, and the honesty. I want to go back to a board meeting where, and again, I'm going to preface this by saying, my comments are not meant to demean or whatever is proximal to demeaning a group of colleagues. But if we're being honest and transparent, there was a board meeting where a quorum of four board directors believed it was okay to go from failing 66% of black boys to failing 50%. Remember that? The 2% over five years. I was hotter than fish grease then. That is not a standard that I want for black boys in my community, and I do not believe it's a standard that my white colleagues would accept for their kids. So that's thing number one. When we think about getting to what Chief of Staff Eric pointed out, to students being able to successfully take AP and IB classes, it starts in third grade. It actually starts before then. It does start in preschool, but we're not going there. That's going to be how I, that is going to be how I, in my career, is starting with the youngest citizens once again. But if we, and I believe that this board can make amends and say, you know what, we're not going to accept failing 56% of black boys in this district in five years. If, where there's a will, there's a way. And if there's no will, then that's going to stand. And that will be a statement to the African-American community that we believe it is okay to fail 56% of black boys in this district. So when they get to high school, hashtag not our fault, that they can't take and compete in AP and IB classes. That's what we're settling on. We have an opportunity here with this, you all are calling it a strategic plan. I would like for us to think about it as a strategic focus. And I'm not just throwing words out there. Strategic plans get made and then they sit on a shelf. Because if, in fact, this district were deeply leaning into its strategic plan, we wouldn't have a statistic of failing 66% of African-American boys. Would anybody like to challenge me on that? Like, if we were really leaning into that, and so, let's not play games here. Is this strategic quote-unquote "plan" actually going to be something that's implementable? And then is there going to be a will and a way to implement it? I don't need an answer for that. But I, I would like us to consider, given that we are hiring a new superintendent, that we think about the work we're doing now as sort of laying the foundation and the foundation for that individual to be able to decide whether they want to do a strategic plan or a strategic focus. That, this is a thing that's happening because strategic plans often don't, they just don't go anywhere. But if you have a focus and people are assigned to certain parts of that focus, work gets done. And so, you don't have to change anything really with this. We just need to sort of conceptualize it differently. I do not want to hand a new superintendent a task that says, we're okay with failing 66 to 56% of black boys. I'm going to keep saying that. And come, when I'm done, I'm going to be at the blonde podium. Because that's going to be my work. I will not settle for a Seattle Public School Board to believe it's okay to fail even 40%. Going from 66 to 56, we've left a whole bunch of kids behind because there's no focus on those kids. We need to figure out both and. And so, as we, as you all do this work, which, again, I'm going to state it for the record, I, I'm excited about this. I, I feel like for the first time in a long time, you all are sitting here presenting us real information. Information that we can digest, information that we can think on, information that we can form our thoughts and ideas for plans around. That's progress. I want to state that for the record. I haven't been excited about this role in a long time. And I feel like for 17, the next 17 weeks, I have something to be excited about. I'm going to begin to count Wednesdays starting in August because it will be very many less than 17. But my time is done. Well, my time will be done, but I'm going to go out still advocating for the same things. Because I, I don't want to leave here believing that a quorum of four believes it's okay to fail 56% of black boys in this district. I can't live with that belief. I have to believe that my colleagues will make a shift, a mindset shift, that it's not okay. Because we wouldn't say it was okay for what is currently the dominant culture of kids. We would not say it's okay to fail 56% of white kids in our district. The parents wouldn't settle for that. And so I'm speaking for the voices that often don't get heard. That's who I'm speaking on behalf of, not for. Some might say, yes, Michelle, you're speaking for. But I'd like to think I'm speaking on behalf of. So congratulations. I think we are making progress. Maybe it was the vote tonight to install interim superintendent. Can we just drop the interim? Superintendent Podesta, that's what he's doing. The interim doesn't matter because we expect him to do his job and do it well. But I'm excited for what you're going to bring to the table this point forward.
Thank you. I am wondering, having been through various iterations of various community task forces, mostly as a community member, because they sort of disappeared, COVID and after. So this is exciting. But my question is, I had put in an email, and if I got a response, I missed it, so apologies for that. But I would like to know what the methodology was for selection, and if, a little bit more about demographics of the composition in terms of not just race and identity, but if they're representing parents of elementary kids. I mean, they're not all going to be parents, I assume. But just what, what experience are we capturing here? And, yeah, how the selection was done. And then, I do not believe that board members should be voting or participating, members of the task force, but I do believe it is valuable to have a board member there periodically, just to, I think, in, in past times when there is a task force, sometimes there will be one or two board members actually assigned to the task force. I don't think at this point, that's, that's, I'm not asking for that, but just if there's a time where it seems like, hey, we're going to have this conversation and, you know, reach out to President Top and say, is there somebody who's available, or would you like to come? I think that would be great, just to add to that, you know, our kind of check-in and oversight of what's, what's happening would be nice. And then, the most damaging thing when, when these task forces happen is when you're on a task force and you leave and you feel like it didn't matter. And usually, in my experience, that comes from a lack of clarity around the scope, that people are participating in a task force with a different idea than what it's actually being used for. Sometimes that's not the case. Sometimes it was just a check-the-box thing and people say, on your way. So I am interested in what we, I mean, I see the, the purpose and the role here, and I think that's great, but I would like clarity on if there's a scope in any deliverables, or if they're just a sounding board, like what's, kind of what are we expecting from this task force? So you don't have to answer that now unless you have the answer, but I would like to know kind of methodology for choosing the composition of the task force, and then what their, what their charge, what the expectation actually is.
We have all of that in a document that's coming your way.
Perfect.
We could send it right after this meeting, but we're hoping, I think, Monday in the forecast to the board to get that out.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Yeah, no, no rush. And then, just to add on to what Michelle was saying, we've got four seats up for the board. The power of a board and the importance of a board is that individuals may come and go, but the direction of the board is what is supposed to be sustaining and consistent. Doesn't mean that direction can't change, but what, I, I am also, like Michelle, very excited about this. This feels tangible. This feels like real progress. This feels like, you know, those of us who have kids in the system and have been advocates for a long time, the emerging issues, they're not emerging. That's what we know. Those are things we know and experience all the time, but it is really validating. And important for us to see that from an outside perspective, that it's not just anecdotes, it's not just people with chips on their shoulders, it's not our imagination. An outside entity is coming in, looking at the landscape, and they have identified these things. And they've also been identified before by other search firms or task forces or whatever. So my, I am excited and my, I'm not going to say biggest fear because that's kind of dramatic, but I hope desperately that we can look back on this moment as the real turning point for Seattle Public Schools, and not just another time where, yep, they did that 12 years ago, they did this task force, they did this thing, and then a new board got elected, and it got trashed, and nothing changed. Because that has happened so many times. Yeah, so what I was going to add to that was Michelle talking about strategic plans sit on the shelf. They do that if there's no accountability. And that is our job as a board. And so for everyone on the board, anyone hoping to be on the board, if you're not excited by this, and if you're not willing to hold people accountable to it, step aside.
Yeah.
Don't run. Because this is the work. This is what we need to do to turn this around for the students of Seattle Public Schools. And we have the people who have the heart and the willingness and the commitment to doing this, and please, let's not just throw it away.
I would want to note, you know, leadership stability has been an issue that has been raised, but I think I'm the longest-serving member. raised, but I think I'm the longest-serving member of the cabinet. The board has completely turned over a lot. In my time at Seattle Public Schools, the underlying goals that you all articulated in working with the community have not changed that much. So I, I think this is about disciplined discussions about how we do things, not what we're doing. And so, and that's a huge step. You know, I think we have clarity of purpose. Organizational change is very difficult. It takes an enormous amount of discipline. That's what we need to do.
Yeah, we have to do what we say.
And we need to honor commitments to each other and keep our eye on the ball and not get distracted. That, that seems to me is the key to what we, and I think we can certainly have change in leadership, we can have a lot of changes, but I, the underlying foundation, the message is the same one that was also developed with the public process in 2018. So we're, and it can be done. It's not impossible. So it's just, it's now, now it's go time, yeah.
All right. Other questions?
All right. I appreciate the update. I think we'll continue to have updates at our, our meetings so we, we can know that even though we are in a leadership transition, we are continuing to do the work and that developing the strategic plan and the budget and all of those things are important. I will just say, I, I've heard from some folks who attended the first Stakeholder Advisory Task Force, and they really appreciated it. They thought it was a very productive conversation. So thank you. I appreciate us getting that, that off the ground. But with that, I think that concludes our second board meeting of the month. I think we had kind of three goals this evening. Get ready for the upcoming school year. We did that with some intro and action items. Have an update on our superintendent search, specifically the timeline piece. I think that's, that's important. And then the update on the strategic plan. But there being no further business on the agenda, the meeting stands adjourned at 6:55. Thanks, everyone.